Brian.
All right, this is the April twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-three, meeting of the Southborough Library Board of Trustees. It is eleven thirty-seven A.M. We're working off a revised agenda and President Marguerite Landry, Kim Regan, Amy Estani, Ryan Donovan, and David Eckberg, absent Janet Maney and Jane Davis. All right.
You, um, is the, are you sure it's a revised agenda, Marguerite? Because we got the note from the town clerk that they couldn't update it.
Oh, man.
There was an item that you tried to add that was on the preservation restriction.
Yes.
Um, that we, that is not on the agenda. We have to go off the one that was posted.
All right, that's easy enough. There was only one difference, and that was the preservation restriction. I added it in and knowing that we're not going to get the update today. There it is. All right. Uh, the first item is to review and approve the minutes of the meeting on March tenth, two thousand and twenty-three. Do I have any, um, evandations or corrections? Hearing none, I will call for a motion to accept the minutes as written. Wasn't that good?
Hearing my motion.
All right, that's. That's Amy's move. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, um, I think David got in there first. Um, uh, Landry, I, uh, Kim?
Hi.
Okay, Janet? Um, not Janet, sorry, Amy.
I, I.
And David.
Hi.
All right, the, it, they are accepted unanimously as written. Director's report, expense report. Um, Ryan, I, when I look at this agenda, I'm seeing a couple of things that are very major. Um, um, the personnel board requirements, the, um, letter of intent, the evaluation and solicitation. Um, do you want to move those ahead of the director's report just to make sure that we get them all done? Because I know Kim has a hard stop.
I think David does.
David has.
I have another meeting at one o'clock.
Okay, that's who it is, not Kim.
Why don't, why, why don't we do it at your discretion, Marguerite? There's some stuff on expenses that I have to go over. Right. That happened after I wrote the report. So I'm going, they're, they're kind of minor, but I want to note them in this meeting. They're going to be in the director's report next week. And I think Marguerite and David know about it, but Amy and Kim don't. And I don't know that, I think Jane and Janet also do. So not everybody knew this because people have been in the library for all the events lately, and I just didn't get a chance to update the documentation. So I will go over that. It's mainly, we had to transfer programming money into, um, that was paid out of LSTA back into the program budget.
Right.
So, uh, but I'll go for those later.
If it's okay with everybody, I would, I would put the director's report, um, after staff appreciation, which is number se- six, no, eight, number eight, if that's okay. Just, um, because I know David has to go and we're half an hour later than we usually are. So, Ryan, if you want to do, um, item number three, which is the expense report, that'd be great.
No, do something else because I'm not ready yet. I was speaking with IT in the town, responding to town clerk emails. So wait, do we, are we talking about staff appreciation? Do you mind, do we want to do where, it was a big hit?
Yes.
You did a good job. Again, I'm saying we, but you guys did it. I think the community bulletin board was a great addition. I think that might become part of the annual event, if that's okay.
Did you take a picture and send it to the trustees who weren't able to get in? It was filled, you had to, there was no room. You had to move stuff to put your own, and it was a full-size, um, bulletin board. So that was awesome. I said, maybe if, when he takes it down, put them in a basket, like in the staff rooms.
Yes.
You know, they could go, you know, look at them kind of as they sit there. Because I'm sure they didn't get to see them all, so anyway.
That's a great idea, whosever it was.
It was, really it was Amy's, but I, I have to give the friends credit for, um, kind of stepping up and contributing, especially Mary Tinty, who kind of created the visual look of the board. And then Kathy Gittens came every day to monitor the board, just in case we had kind of bizarre messages. The only weird one was somebody said, "I love police." That was the only message we took down. And we just think it was a little kid who was maybe confused about where they were.
Yeah.
So.
Well, that's, that's, uh, that's good to know.
Mary and Kathy, and I will admit, I stole it from, um, Clinton Library. So I took from libraries when I'm in their, in towns and they happen to have theirs up. So I was like, this is awesome.
That's really good. I'm, I'm glad this has become an institution and, and, uh, thank you to everybody for.
Yes, thank you.
Creativity, thank you to the friends. Uh, it's just, I think it's a thing that the, the staff is so appreciative of being appreciated that it, it makes this wonderful, uh, loop between, um, the entire town and the staff, which is really, really good. They are a great, they are a great group and they work really hard and we, we want to show. So Amy, thank you for spearheading that. And, uh, thank you to the friends and thank you to all the trustees.
Yeah, all the trustees, I mean, you do all the hard work, so thank, thank everybody.
No, it really works that well and we'll do it again next year, I'm hoping, with the addition of the community bulletin board. It'd be great and other ideas. All right, so with that, Ryan, are you ready to talk about the personnel board requirement update?
Yeah, so that, that is actually super quick.
Yeah.
Um, and I, I kind of reached out to Marguerite about this already. I don't know if you, you guys got this. I think it was on the board and committee email, but if not, I will forward it to you. Basically what the personnel board is going to start doing, and this was, this is funny because it kind of aligns with something I've wanted to do for a while, which is standardize the job descriptions and update them. We have the added, I would say, challenge on our side is that your board, right? The Board of Library Trustees has to approve all of the library job descriptions, but they also have to get approved by the Personnel Board. So there may be a fair amount of me going back and forth between the two groups in order to finalize some of this. That said, there's about fifty-something, possibly more, um, SEP job descriptions this year that are going to get updated. But it was noted, especially like, like I was on the meeting where they were talking about this and they provided me an example first. The library presently has the most job descriptions that need to be updated. So I have the biggest, uh, job ahead of me this year, so.
What does need, what does need to be updated mean?
So, so we really need to go through each individual job description, and some of the, the, the updates are not substantive. A lot of it is reformatting things in sort of the standardized format. What I will say is what the Collins Center, which is the, um, the consultant that they use for pay, paying classification study, uses a format that was kind of similar to what I call the classic job description. So it kind of had those bullet points on like, you know, physical requirements, education, kind of your standard job description fare, you know? So I don't think reformatting those is going to be too difficult. Some of the things, like I will say, the Assistant Director Job Description was written, and it specifically highlights young adult services in it, where our Assistant Director is in charge of children's services, right? So that, I would just say, is a pretty substantive update that needs to occur as part of this work. Um, the other, those, that's the only thing I can think of that's really major off the top of my head, and that's literally plugging in children's services instead of young adult services.
So.
Yeah.
Ryan, go ahead. Um, what's the timeline and do you need help from the trustees?
Yeah, because we'll have to, we'll have to make this kind of a standardized agenda item, and then it's kind of up to you guys. We can do these as part of a, a regular meeting. We can schedule separate meetings to do this. So I guess this is, I'm going to let Jane and Janet aware of this too, and you guys don't have to make a decision now because we just found out we have to standardize and update them. Um, but it's not until, I believe, June of two thousand and twenty-four that they need to be in.
So we're going to.
They need to get the dual approval if you have an elected board, and we do.
So what I, what I'd like to avoid is having it go to the trustees, go to personnel and get changed, go back to trustees and change it, go back to personnel and change it. Do you think it'd be possible for the trustees to get a fairly final and already personnel-approved description?
Well, I mean, a lot of these have been sort of, we, we've made like concentrated efforts to revise these and get these up to date. And again, with that exception of sort of the glaring, um, the glaring change we need to do in the Assistant Director Description, I don't think we're going to be reinventing the wheel with this work in particular. A lot of it is formatting it, but it's also just making sure that the information is somewhat standardized from description to description. So if we talk about physical requirements in one, we're talking about them in all of them, if that makes sense. So a lot of it is sort of like, um, editorial feedback. I discussed what you just, your concern, Marguerite, you said about the, you know, wanted to go to trustees, personnel, trustees, personnel. Barry said, in an ideal world, that wouldn't work, but when you have groups that need to do approvals like this, that unfortunately is the process. So I, I was actually going to kind of, when we talked about my review, suggest updating the job descriptions next year, again, kind of with that Assistant Director one in particular in mind. I will also give you guys feedback on the Library Director Job Description. That one is one of the ones that hasn't been looked at in over ten years. Um, so there, I think there's an opportunity right there to look at it and see if it is. I think it still is pretty relevant, but there may be responsibilities you guys want to discuss adding. Um, you may want to just refine some of the language in that. The other one is Senior Library Assistant. That, those are the two I think we haven't really looked at in a decade, so.
Sorry, go ahead.
I, I'm, I was just saying like, this is going to take a while. It's really, we're going to kind of need the full year, if that makes sense. And I would suggest kind of tackling them one at a time. I think that there's seven of them altogether. So that means if we do kind of the major ones right away, um, that those are the ones I think that are going to take the longest. So it's the ones I just mentioned, Library Director, Assistant Library Director, and Senior Library Assistant. The rest of them are newer and I think include a lot of the revised language. Those ones might just be kind of a reformat job. I will also work with Vanessa Hale, who has already been, I have to say, very helpful on taking a look at these and providing me the example.
Okay, so what I, what I, I know this is sounding a little draconian, but I remember in the old system of doing the budget, we would do it, it would go to the advisory. It would come back, we would do it, we'd go to advisory. And sometimes it would take four iterations, which should be about, um, four to five hours of committee time, um, of, of board discussions. And it, it, I'd like to avoid that inefficiency if we possibly could. So I'd like to get it as close to the language that you think the Personnel Board would like. Um, because I know with editing, it can be an endless, uh, procedure. And I think that's not the best use of the board's time at this point.
I think what, I think if I can propose a path on this, I think we pick a job description to do for a meeting, right? I send that out, similar to what I do with the minutes. You guys send editorial feedback to me, and then I am the one who kind of coalesces that, like puts it into, so, so the other thing is just bear in mind that I'm going to be getting six different versions of the documents potentially, depending on who wants to provide feedback. So what I'm going to do is my best to get everybody's edits integrated and to me, and also to kind of review them one by one with Vanessa to make, and she can kind of do that work a little bit with the Personnel Board.
Okay.
I think the Personnel Board is not going to go through Vanessa. I think at their meetings, they're going to read them and then provide feedback that way. We cannot determine what their process is going to be, Marguerite. I think the only thing we can control is how we send the information to the Personnel Board.
All right.
So, you know, I will say Barry, Barry Rubenstein, who's the chair, this, this is one of his goals for the next year. It's one of my goals for the next year, and I, I do think that this is feasible for us to get done. If we, and, and then if we don't, I mean, we're going to try. I think that's the best we can, we can propose.
Right.
But this is, this is, I think, an important thing. We want people to be functioning on your job descriptions that make sense. And the idea of them being in like, we have seven job descriptions in like five different formats, that makes no sense. It really needs to be standardized, I think, so that, um, it's easier for the staff and for anybody, like per, prospective employees, right? They sometimes ask for the job descriptions. I think it does need to be standardized for those reasons.
Right, as long as the process of, um, passing it back and forth is as streamlined as possible. I may be the only one who feels this way, but I sort of do feel this way.
That makes sense, that makes sense. Ryan, are you giving some sort of a boilerplate or, or, uh, a template for this? Or are we simply working off the most recent iteration, uh, of our own?
No, so the Collins Center has provided an example, so I will get that information to you. It's, it sounds like people maybe didn't get this email, right? Is that fair? Did you not get anything from Vanessa or Barry on this? So I will, because you guys are going to be involved in this. I will send you that and I will send you the example job description that we have. I can also send, it is on our website, all of the library job descriptions that have been in their approved form. So I can also send those out, but I don't, I like, I don't want to send you guys too much information at once, right? I think it would make sense to, like, in, starting in May or June, depending on when you guys want to start this. Because I know my evaluation is going to come up too, and I think this would potentially be a goal for me, is that, I think we should tackle them kind of one at a time.
Okay, Kim, what were you, um, going to say?
Yeah, I had a similar question to David, like whether there are any boilerplate, um, areas that we can just, like if the town has any sort of boilerplate stuff regarding like, you know, anti-discrimination, things like that, like is, is there that one thing that we can make sure to put in ours so we don't have to cover it? And then the library, I think, will have its own boilerplate, like you mentioned, the things about, um, lifting weight limits, things like that. Um, but yeah, I think as much as we can, like, boilerplate certain sections, um, and just create a template for ourselves, I think that will make it easier for us, hopefully.
Good, and what other towns have in place that we might, um, use?
I was just going to say, that keeps it consistent across the town, too.
Yeah.
You know, I think it should be kind of cohesive idea, so we're not doing something totally different, unless it is important that we do something different.
Right. So, sounds good. Other questions or comments? No, good. Okay, so Ryan, that's, sounds like you've got it under control. How about item number five?
All right, we're still on a Personnel Board, um, item, really quick. So that, because there were two things that came up on Monday's meeting that I have to talk to you guys about. One, the other issue was that there is town set aside for employee training. They have booked a, um, a sort of a trainer to come, uh, who's going to be doing D E I trainings, which is diversity, equity, and inclusion. Um, the person, there was a discussion that the Personnel Board would like to mandate this for all town employees. So I have to talk to you guys because this actually affects library operations. If we mandate, um, a town, like a employee training, we would have to close the library, right? Which would also give the town the benefit of having the library as a potential venue, which I don't think they've decided where they're going to do this yet. It might be at Public Safety, it might be at the Town House, the library is closed, that might be an option. The times are not great that we have. So it is Monday, May fifteenth, from ten to eleven-thirty. So there's an hour and a half in the morning, uh, that would be when the library is normally open. Um, and then there's Wednesday, May twenty-fourth, from one-thirty to three.
That's going to be townwide, they'll all show up at the library for the training at the same time?
Well, so we, we haven't determined the library as a venue yet, Marguerite, but my question to you is, do we want to? I believe this is a, it's a two-part workshop. So you have to go to the Monday one and the Wednesday one. But I, so it's kind of a twofold question, right? Is, first of all, when we have townwide trainings like this, I usually do not mandate it for staff members. I ask them if they would like to attend, and then if they would, we try to make that happen, right? So I took a virtual version of this, uh, like, I want to say it was over a year ago. Um, and that it, we didn't have enough capacity for the staff members to attend, right? Anybody who wasn't a department head. The, now the idea is that they want to try to involve as many people as possible in this, right? But that the department heads who took this training, you know, it would be good if they could get a refresher, but it's, it's more important for the people who never had it. Um, do we, I guess, I guess the question is, I can figure this out. Do we want to close the library at these times? On Monday, May fifteenth, from ten to eleven-thirty? And then Wednesday, May twenty-fourth, in the middle of the afternoon, from one-thirty to three?
Ryan, can you clarify one thing? So did you say that the town was requiring all employees to attend this?
So the Personnel Board wanted the training mandated for town employees. But that is, there was its own discussion about that, Kim, because there's never been trainings that are mandated. And they can't really do that, I think, for, um, like facilities or departments that have elected boards. They really should be having a conversation with you guys. But I was at the Personnel Board meeting, listening to this on Monday, and I'm, I think you guys, you know, you didn't know that they were going to talk about this. I didn't know, right? I didn't even know that, that there was going to be a, like a mandated training. So, uh, to me, I think D E I is one of those topics where it would be helpful for our staff to gain more knowledge. I already know, this went out to town employees already. There's already full-time staff who want to attend this. Um, you know, my instinct would be, because they're going to close the Town House as well, so this might be easier to coordinate across town departments. Um, I don't think our users are going to love it, but I know years ago, we did talk about sometimes closing the library for professional development opportunities. This is a training that's been paid for by the town, so there's no cost to the library. I think it's just a matter of managing the operational expectations that we'll have to shut down for parts of some of the day. The only program that this ends up affecting is a storytime on Monday. I have already talked to Kim and to the children's staff that help her down there, and we can cancel that training, uh, cancel that program.
Do we know why they want to do it in person instead of virtually, the way you did it?
I think they're trying to get as many in-person trainings as possible. I think they've gotten feedback that, that the employees tend to like those better, you know? I, I, I can't answer that, that's more of a question for the Personnel Board, Marguerite.
I think it's valuable for them to do it. I think, you know, you just equated to like school professional development days. They close the school for those and you're not closing for the whole day. You'll just open late on the Monday, correct?
Yeah, we would probably try to open at noon.
Yeah.
And then, um, Wednesday, I don't know, we might be closed, you know, we might open ten to twelve and, or ten to one, ten to one, I think, and then kind of shut down for the training and then reopen at like three-thirty. I mean, if it's okay with you guys, I'll try to work with Vanessa and figure out what the hours would be. I think it would matter too if we offer the library as a potential space. I, I kind of like the idea of offering the library and seeing if the town employees could come here and do it. There's, there's some town employees who never come to the library.
Right.
This would be a nice opportunity to get them in and to see some of the, you know, the, uh, work we've done, the new carpet upstairs, you know? So that's just, I can't force them to do that. They might want the tech in the public safety facility, for instance, right? But, so Corderville's bigger, they might want to do it there. So I, you know, but I, I just think it'd be nice if we offered.
How many folks are we talking about?
They don't know because they, they're going to, again, this discussion about mandating kind of through everybody, through me. So I, I think they're going to try to get all the town employees to go, but then it's also like, what if somebody scheduled vacation for part of this period? You know, what if an employee is out on a, on a medical leave or on some other status? They're not going to be able to attend. So I can already tell you, I don't think all the part-time library staff are going to be able to go, and there's at least one or two full-time that might have a conflict. So we'll try to get as many library employees as we can, but, but I think if we close, that'll be easier.
I, I agree, I support it. I just think we're living in a litigious age and it's also the right thing to do, and it is better in person, so. I, uh, I'm, I'm all for that.
Me too.
I agree.
Okay.
Me too.
Okay, so I'll, I'll plan on reaching out to Vanessa and just letting her know that we, we're going to look at closing the library for, for those times, and then also that the library could be a potential venue if they want to utilize that.
Okay.
Good.
Sorry, I know that was a lot that I had to go.
No, 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 it's important. I, I think it's, I think the training sounds good, and maybe people who couldn't make it could watch it online. I mean, it seems like something that I wouldn't mind watching myself, actually, so there we are on that. Um, all right, if it's okay with everybody, item number five, very exciting, Mass Public Library Construction Program Letter.
Yeah, so the, this is a quick one. On, uh, Tuesday night, Marguerite and I went to the Select Board meeting. We asked, we gave them a quick update on the Massachusetts, um, construction building program. I already got the acronym wrong, but the, you know, the N C P L C P or whatever. And so, um, we talked about how the construction grant round is open from the M D L C, and then how the first step to give us the option to apply for the grant was to, um, was to submit a letter of intent. So what I learned since I talked to you guys is that using Amplifund, it's actually more of an online application portal, but the, there's an attached letter that has to go into that application, which, um, is the document that needs to be signed both by library, um, sort of library officials and by town officials. So I am happy to say that the Select Board voted to proceed with, with, um, supporting the letter, you know, not taking a position on any of the construction at this point. But, um, Marguerite, uh, myself, Kathy Cook, and Mark Purple all signed the letter. It was submitted yesterday afternoon, I believe around two or three. So there was a question from one of the Select Board members about asking for planning and design money in the, if we have a fall town meeting. She said that might not line up with our timeframe. I would probably concur with that statement. I think we were really hoping to use a lot of the time in the fall to get additional community input and to try to, um, coalesce that, um, as part of, you know, a potential strategic planning effort that we'll submit next year as well. So, um, I think we're looking at the spring if we go for, for planning and design money. But again, there's going to be a lot more discussions about this in future meetings. So that was positive. I just wanted to let you know that that's been submitted. We are now in the, we're in the queue to, to submit a grant, so that's.
Yeah, I think, right. If you can do it, Ryan, we're right behind you. It's a big thing. Okay, thank you on that. Next item, Library Director Evaluation. Um, it is due when, Ryan?
Is it due? June fif- June fifteenth, I believe. So there might be, there's like next meeting.
Yeah, one more, or we could meet briefly, otherwise. What I would like to do is, we have all received Ryan's selfie val. I'm going to send out again last year's evaluation completed to everybody and also the blank. Um, and if we can follow the same system that we did last year, if everyone can fill in the blank, as it were, um, with what they would use for this year's evaluation and email it back to me, I can collate them. I will use every comment that's in the comment sections. I will include every comment in the comment sections in the master copy comments. I will take all the numbers and average them out, um, so I can put those in. And then with that as a draft, um, we can discuss it at the next meeting, and I think we'll, we'll be on time with that. If that's okay with everybody, I think that's the way we usually, um, proceed. The, uh, only thing we need to discuss really after I do that, which is kind of cut and dried, actually, um, is the, is the three goals for next, for this coming year, and whether the goals for last year were met, um, and if not, why not? And there's, sometimes there's often extenuating circumstances, other things come up. Um, so that would be a discussion for the next, uh, meeting if I have all the, um, drafts back, and I've collated those. Um, and I think one goal for next year, as you mentioned, is the, um, up, updating the policy format. And I think that, I think that should do it. Does that work for everybody?
Yeah.
All right, good. Little homework, not a lot, right? But it's, uh.
May I ask?
Yeah, go ahead.
Um, I was, I was noticing that the, um, the strategic plan was for a time period that ended in, uh, twenty-four. Uh, is, are we too early to start thinking about that, uh, Ryan, and your judgment, or, or Marguerite? To, uh, update the strategic plan?
No, so really what we did, because we did kind of a lot of work my first couple of years, and then really what the next strategic plan iteration was, was an update of that plan. That's typically how you do strategic plans, right? But a lot of, I do kind of need to, this has been kind of a busy programming season, as many of you know, for me, with the, you know, we had the SOLF program, we had Books in Bloom, we have Candidates Day. A lot of the big events we're doing are right now. Really after next week, my time is going to open up a little bit more. What I would like to start doing is scheduling some, um, forums, some open forums for people to provide feedback on the building, but also ostensibly on library services, on things that they would like to see at the library. Um, I'm also going to be developing.
I'm also going to be developing a survey that we can send out. Again, a lot of those questions are going to be more focused on the building. But we can add a couple sort of service questions if there's things people really want to know. You know, I think a couple, I think that strategic planning year in particular, when we did the last update, we wanted some data on the meeting rooms. And that was very helpful, I think, in our long-term planning for what people were seeing. You know, we really thought meeting rooms were really important to people. We found that they were not as important as we thought as a result of that survey. People cared about them, but not on the level I think that we were emphasizing when we had discussions. So I think some of the data can be helpful when you're doing planning. I think a lot of what we do when we look at strategic planning updates is what are the programming components that people are interested in? You know, a, a lot of, a lot of what we're finding now is that there are things people want to do that we don't have the space to do. So that might be a natural result, I think, of some of the strategic planning outcomes. But again, I don't know, we haven't started the process. It is not too early to be thinking about that, David. This is probably the right time to be doing it. So wait, it is through F Y, we're in F Y twenty-three right now, right? That's correct. So our plan is good through F Y twenty-four. So if we wanted to, we could submit a plan at the end of this year and have it be F Y twenty-four through the next one. But we had, so it's always October. I think it's early October. We have to submit with the M B L C. And you guys have to approve a final strategic plan in one of the trustee meetings. We could, we could do that this year, but we can also make it one of my goals and we can do this next year. That would still keep us in a strategic planning cycle, right? Because the new plan would be for F Y twenty-five through F Y, it's a five-year plan, so it'd be through F Y thirty.
So Ryan, and David, that's a really good question and thank you for asking that. Would another possible good set of goals for you for the upcoming year to be, to do a certain number of surveys and forums with, with a mind toward what we'll need for the next strategic plan and also what we'll need to introduce people to the idea of building and expansion?
Yeah, the, the building stuff is gonna have to kind of be done. We're really gonna need some of that community input and some of that data or in advance, right?
So it's, it's time to get going on that.
Yeah, that, that is, so like I said, that is really a, a, a personal thing for me in May. Is you're gonna start seeing some of the stuff scheduled. We haven't scheduled a large amount of events in the summer and really even the fall at this point. Because a lot of what my time is going to be, programming-wise, is going to be working on some of this data. I'm trying to hold forums and then also one of the other, one of the other things I'd like to do is we're gonna try to get people to come to the library to give us feedback. But we also found it very effective in the last strategic planning to go to other groups to get feedback. So we've already reached out to Audrey Allenson, who's the librarian at Trotter. We've talked to her about going in and talking to some of the, the middle school kids there. That is specifically so that we can get feedback on teen services. But we're also kind of interested in what the younger generation is looking at. I'd also like to go to the senior center, both at the dull men's club and the exciting women's club. Those, we, we talked to those groups before. Yeah, I didn't name them. So, so those are kind of what the groups are called. Doug Peck also has a book group. So there's actually a couple groups that we could hit at the senior center. So I kind of have a strategy a little bit. Those were groups that we previously talked to. There's a couple new groups we might involve as well. But we, the hope is going to be that we can get both. We can do, we can do some of this focus group work where we're doing outreach. We can get some of the people coming for public forums and we can do survey data. The strategic plan only really requires you to do one of those things. I found that a combination gets us the, the maximum bang for a buck, right? We really find out, I think we're getting different people on different levels at all of that. That kind of engagement, that is really what I'd like to focus on, is trying to reach the most amount of people. And then it is more work to take that data and kind of put it into a plan format. But again, I think we have good bones. We have a good foundation of the previous plans in order to draw from. And, you know, there's a lot of work. I mean, look at what the master plan has done in, in the, in the past couple of years. Look at what the, the N T C has done with the technology plan. I mean, there's already kind of strategic plans in place, which also this is a, a nice, you know, it's going to be more library-specific for us. But I think that, that, all of that work is going to help us in our future planning as well.
So i- if that, I mean, I'm, maybe no one will agree with me, but if that can be one of your goals, it would be a good foundation for the next strategic plan. The building project, actually modifying our services in response. So it seems like that, that, those documents are kind of pillars for the, for moving forward in the next couple of years. And, and the information collection would be useful for a lot of different things.
I agree with you, Marguerite, as a goal. Yeah, and Marguerite, I think that doing this work, as Ryan suggests, helps with the building design, getting information on that. And Ryan, can you confirm that the strategic plan that we need every five years is required for us to be able to apply for grants and things like that? So that would kind of, you know, cover both of our
It'd be very useful.
Yeah, actually, including the construction program. So if we don't have
Which is the biggest grant, yeah.
Right? So we had, we had to confirm as part of the application process that we have a strategic plan on file and then it was good for this year. So you can update, I did ask this question, David. We can update the strategic plan at the same time that we are, we are working on getting feedback on the initial building program. So, you know, Vanessa, Marguerite and I did have a quick conversation with Vanessa yesterday. You know, she was already, she was already looking at like what the long-term implications of this might be. You know, it might be that we end up forming a library building committee in the future. You know, that is a lot, that is at least a year away, I'll say. But it's not bad to start thinking in those terms. Because this might be a fairly large project and we might want stakeholders, you know, from the select board, from our friends group. There's a lot of different areas where I think those people could contribute. So, I mean, strategic planning is not a small thing. I think it is kind of its own goal for me because that ends up being a pretty substantial amount of work. But I think we're in good shape. I know, it's a lot, but I, you know, I, we do have a good path forward. And we, there were things we did, I think, in the last strategic plan, that if we just update those, you know, it's, it's gonna be good.
Well, I, I hats off to you for doing all of that work because it's what this, the information that's gathered in the focus groups and the surveys is worth its weight in gold in terms of what we need to know. So, thank you for being
First time either, so it, you know, you know what you're doing. We got, we will support you.
Thank you.
All right, so Library Director, yes. Solicitation policy.
So that was an attached document. I don't know how much you want to get into that with this meeting. That was, I kind of sent this out. This is, we talked about this, I think, back in January or February. I couldn't find an example. I think at the next meeting, I did actually get one to kind of look at and modify. You know, this kind of came up because I think we, we did have a discussion in a previous meeting where, you know, we were, we were kind of allowing signatures for a while. And now, you know, there was kind of a concern for me about continuing that practice. You know, I find a lot of libraries don't. So this policy is kind of an, an early attempt at kind of letting people know that on a policy level, we don't allow it.
At the risk of short-circuiting the discussion, I would be prepared to just move that we approved the solicitation policy. Seems well-thought-out, seems complete. And I don't know if we need to thrash it through and wordsmith it, but it looks good to me.
I love that choice of a verb, to thrash, yes. Uh, I'm fine with it. Other thoughts?
Nope, I agree. Looks good.
Do you need a, do you need, need a motion, Marguerite or?
Kim, how about you?
Are you muted, Kim?
Yeah, I'm, I'm fine with it.
All right, so I'll move to accept as written. Just a second. All right, that's David. All right, so in favor, Landry, aye? Uh, Eckberg?
Aye.
Justy Reagan?
Aye.
Justy Astani?
Aye.
All right, so it passes unanimously. Thank you for your work on that, Ryan. It's good to have that addition to the policy book.
They're not here, but just, you know, we can always, I think at a future dates, we always want to kind of revisit policies and look at them in the future to see if they're still working, they're still making sense. So I'm, I'm sorry, I think I cut you off, Kim. But I just want to say like, I know Jane and Janet may not feel like they had, we did send this out and I didn't get any input from them. But just, you know, if we need to revisit this in the future, if, if there's a patron complaint and we want to take a look at it, we could do that, you know?
Um, yeah, can you just confirm that you'll add the date at the bottom before you post it?
Yes, so that's, that is, that's what I'm doing as soon as you guys approve it in the minute. And we, we have it also documented in our minutes as well. So it'll, it'll have the same language as the previous policies we did on the privacy policy and the security camera policy. So we're kind of following that same format. But you're right, Kim, it wasn't added to that draft. So I, 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 I have been advised on the town side not to add dates just in case we don't have things approved, is that those drafts go out and then people get confused. So I will, that's going to be kind of my practice moving forward. And it's gonna, it's actually good to mention that because it'll be the same for the job descriptions. We're going to add a date that they get approved in the trustee meetings. So that'll help see like when the last time they were looked at and voted on.
Thank you.
Thank you for that, Kim. That, that helps to straight, straighten out the question when there are multiple drafts. Which, which one finally got voted on? All right, so that's great. Preservation restriction, we are not going to discuss. And the Community Center Exploration Committee update. That's a Janet topic, right?
Uh, well, I'm on it too. I can tell you that the group, we took a tour of Finn at this point. We're, I think, I think what the general feeling of the overall committee is, and again, just bear in mind, I don't, I don't represent everybody. But I think after, there was a tour of Woodward again, for some of the newer members of the, you know, the committee had been formed. Even though I had been kind of working on this for a while already, Kim and Janet and I had already seen the building. But some of the committee members had not really looked at Woodward. So they went over there, they took a look. I think kind of the general consensus of the committee now is that Woodward would really not work as a potential community center facility for a number of different reasons. So now, I think the idea was to look at Finn. I think there was a letter sent out that Finn is under review, right, by Mr. Malinowski. So they're just, they're just taking a look and they're just starting the conversations about it. I will say, in a review, I had never really done a tour of Finn before. So I was, I, I did go on that. Janet was with me. I think almost every member of our committee was. What I can tell you is that I could see a lot of challenges in, in the space at Woodward. I don't think that there aren't challenges at Finn, but I would say the layout, the size of Finn does make it, make more sense to me personally as a potential community center space. If the school were to close and then it worked to open as town offices. I, you know, a couple of the committee members did ask me one-on-one, would this, could you make this work as a library? And I think the short answer is probably, yeah. But again, I think I'm very used to libraries as standalone facilities. I haven't seen libraries a lot in shared spaces. You know, like I said, I know the library in Tingsborough, which is, you know, next to me in New Hampshire. They share it with their, like a lot of their town departments. And they're actively looking to do a standalone facility. Like there, I think they're also
Yeah, that's, that's interesting, yeah.
Oh, Brian, I guess I didn't realize that Finn was being explored for that. With that thought, where are they planning to put those grades?
So, so that is also, I think, a, a, a question, Kim, that hasn't really been like fully answered. But, but again, I don't want to misrepresent the committee. I, what we learned, what, we've learned a lot, I think, just about how the school's capacity and what's going on. Like, I was not aware that a number of North Borough students also attend South Borough schools because they are kind of maxed out with, with their enrollment. So that, you know, that was something I kind of learned from discussions with parents. And then we also learned that there is a large amount of Trotter that is not utilized. So the potential of adding another grade could happen. I don't know that the school committee or the superintendent, kind of on a developmental side, thought that adding fifth grade into Trotter is a, is an option. But again, I think they're looking at Niri is going to need attention in the next ten years, right? And that they, what is going to happen to the rest of the schools as a result of that? So that, that's kind of where the discussions are. The, the sessions are, our committee is uh, recorded too. And I can tell you, the next meeting is Monday at seven thirty. And you guys are always welcome to, you know, to come and
Can I jump in for two seconds and answer?
I'll say that.
In, in answer to Kim's question, which is very interesting, there's four school buildings. Niri either tear it down or repair it. That's a discussion. Close one school, don't close one school. Move, move K and first grade into a different school. This is all like totally fluid at this point. So any input that you have is, this is, it's really interesting for this whole process. The questions are, do you use a school building for something else? Do you, do you spend a fortune building a new Niri? Do you, Niri needs a roof anyway. It's gonna cost millions to fix it the way it is. So everything's very fluid right now. And I think this is a good spot where parents get a, get, should have good feedback about what they conceive of as well-structured school systems. One of the things that's changed is the state. When you build a school, usually gives you sixty percent of the cost. It's now twenty percent of the cost. Yeah, that's that, that my, my eyeballs rolled up when I heard that because that's a huge difference. And so these, these factors all need to be, no decisions are being made. And the other question is, is the number of students going downtown? And the other question is, if they build a big development, will that send a lot more students in that we're not factoring in? So a lot of stuff is up in the air right now. If you want to get involved in the conversation, I think it's a really good time. Because again, people were looking at Woodward to solve problems and the pushback from the town or the feedback was maybe Woodward's not good to decommission and make it to something else. So again, it's like totally fluid at this point, so.
A result of the, a result of the committee work might be making no changes. I, I think that spatially and, you know, this, with the library, the senior center and recreation are involved as, as kind of standout departments as part of this work. Because those are the departments that have the most need. I will say, a lot of the fields that recreation uses are at Finn, right? So there's some synergy, I think, because Woodward was going to be a lot more difficult as a facility for recreation to potentially use. So again, I don't speak for recreation. I don't know what the Recreation Commission is deciding, but we have Jen Ha- I'm trying, is it, it's not Jen Henson. We have somebody on the Recreation Commission who, who's with us. It might, it is Jen. Jen is on that, on the community center with us. And then some of the, it's kind of the, the community members who don't represent a board are parents. So they're bringing in a parent's perspective for people who have been in the school system. And so I think that is also important because their feedback is being integrated as well. But, but, you know, I don't mean to horrify people at the fact that we looked at Finn and like took a tour of it with the idea of making a community center. I think we're kind of assessing all of the buildings in the town and we're seeing what the potential possibility of those buildings might be, right? There, there's a lot of decisions, I think, that would have to be made from different stakeholders on whether or not a school were to close.
That's why input from parents is so important because parents are the ones who will be the most, you know, involved in any changes. And there's one philosophy, you put the little kids alone in a school, it's easier. And then there's another philosophy, if they have to make a school transition, it's tougher on them. So have three schools rather than four. So there's a lot, there's a lot of moving parts to this. And you've probably got more experience with, with, with kids in the school system than I have because it's been a while since my kid graduated from Mount Gunklin. But parent input, I cannot stress enough, is so important on this. So if you, if you have the time and inclination, So if you, if you have the time and inclination. It's useful to share your, your thoughts.
It, it's also interesting to me just because I, I think I've stated this in trustee meetings before. I often don't have a lot of contact with the schools, you know, I had never gone and took a full tour of Finn before. I got to take a full tour of Woodward as part of this preliminary work too. So that is giving me a much better sense of, of the schools, like there just hasn't been an opportunity really for me to get in there. And to look at these spaces before, and then to talk with some of the people who, who are part of that. So I, you know, I think that has been beneficial in, in a way, like it has helped me. And I get to see, you know, Pam and Tim from the senior center in recreation. You know, that we got, we took the actual tour of the building, so I got to see them in person and catch up with them. I mean, all of that was a benefit, so I, you know, I think there are positive things happening there. I think that the work is going to continue for a while, so.
Anyway, so yes, many unknowns, but much opportunity, so. That's a, to be continued, anyway. Alright, so revised candidate, if we're okay on that, revised candidates night program. Anybody want to speak to that? I think it was a Janet.
I think it's me again.
Okay, I'm, I'm not involved in this because I'm running, so.
Yeah, so just, I think at the end of our last meeting, I think kind of the general idea was to. Not do a candidates night, right, at the library? And then kind of this, so, you know, Janet did reach out and offer herself as a moderator. For the event, and we didn't really have anybody, we did try to explore that option. Of getting somebody from the League of Women's Voters to come and do it. I think we might have gotten somebody if it was a virtual program. I think the idea that it was going to be in person was more problematic for them. They had to try to find somebody who was local to our area and they, they didn't get anybody. So really, Janet was the only person I had as a potential moderator. So I did, you know, we kind of met and talked about how it could work. I also looked at if we could book Cordova Hall at the senior center that night for the event. Which means it wouldn't really, the library disruptions to the, to the operations, to people who were studying at the library, that wouldn't have factored in. So I also got feedback from a lot of the candidates and a lot of the people who previously attended. The events on how important it was and how we should try to organize something. So, you know, again, I think this is going to be kind of experimental, we're going to see how this goes at Cordova. You know, Janet moderating, I think, is, it means I, I can kind of provide the support role. That I've done in previous years, which I'm still comfortable doing. I think we just see how it's going to go. I, I will say, this is an election cycle where we have more contested races. Than any of the other candidates nights that I've been involved in. And I was, I was involved on my third day of work on one, right? So it's, it's, this will be the ninth that, that I've, I've been a part of. So, you know, I think voters are looking for information. You know, we do try to be a civic hub for, for, you know, the electorate to try to get that information. So, you know, we were very clear on laying out some ground rules for the candidates. We're going to go over some ground rules for the attendees at the beginning. We are hoping that people are not disruptive as they were in the previous year. If they are, I think that that factors into a reevaluation of doing it again in the future, unfortunately. But that's kind of where we're at, not every candidate can attend, that sometimes happens. So I think of the five select board candidates, we're only going to have three. So that, you know, that's unfortunate, but we didn't do it on a Wednesday night. Because the school committee sometimes meets on the Wednesday and they've given us feedback that Wednesdays are awful for us to try to schedule. They didn't use that word, I'm using that word, but we, we really wanted to try to do it on a Thursday. Because that night has the least conflict with town board and committee meetings. And then also would not conflict with school committee, and we did it the Thursday before the election. Terry from Access Media is going to come and film the presentation. We've also reached out to the people who can't be there and asked them if they could submit like a video. Just with a candidate statement that we can potentially play. So Wegmans gave us money, I applied for the catering, they went up one dollar, so we got a hundred and one dollars from Wegmans. So thanks Wegmans for that. And I, I think we're in good shape, we're going to see how it goes this year and then I think kind of go from there.
Okay, thoughts?
What about the hard question of having a police officer present?
So.
Is that discussed?
Yeah, so I did, that was, there was a lot of follow-up, David, after the last meeting. Because I kind of was told by not the police department. Yeah, sure, the police can, can come by, they've been coming by some other meetings just to make sure everything is good. Then I talked with our police chief, who said, if you want to station an officer there at an event, you definitely have to pay for that. So, you know, we are, there's going to be officers who are on duty, we are, we have made them aware of the event. We, we were hoping that if they're not on a call, that they could stop by and have a presence at the event. But we're not going to pay for an officer to be there for the entire, the entirety of it. So if there is an emergency situation, that we've also made the police department aware that we would need to call them. So.
Plus they're right across the street.
Yeah, and we've never, we've never reached out to the police department in this way during my tenure as director. For a candidates night event, or really for any event. So I think, you know, Chief Newell is taking that seriously. I think he's aware of what our concerns are and that he will do his best to try to make sure that an officer is available.
Other thoughts? Kim, Amy? Okay, alright, so next order of business, public comment. I don't think there's any public present with us today. And any other business that shall properly come before the board?
Well, we, we didn't really go over the director's report or the expense report. I, I know we're going to get you right, right at one, David, so I'm going to go quick. I know I always go really long with the director's report, it was pretty self-explanatory. This time, it was a lot of like program updates and a lot of those programs have already occurred. In the, just as kind of a spoiler for the next meeting. We, there were two things that we had to do account transfers on, on the expense side. So Mariana submits bills for the cooking grant and I tend to just pay them. And sometimes, I really should be reviewing each individual bill before I pay it. And there was a hundred and fifty bill we paid that was actually for a teen job searching. Thing, so that was. That was mistakenly paid, so we're fixing that on the accounting side. It's, it was paid out of the LSTA grant, it was moved out of that. The, we also got feedback from our grant consultant, who we're meeting with, Lindsay Forbes from the MBLC. On a, one of the Kim Larkin programs apparently did not qualify. As a cooking grant program, so that had to be also transferred from the. LSTA fund into the program budget. So I'm going to have details on that, I'm going to have the account transfer. If you guys want the memos that we did to accounting, I will have those as well.
Well, we're on the record that the correction's being made as of this meeting, so.
Yeah, so I just, I just want to have it in writing for you guys, so you can see it.
Other thoughts?
Ryan, on the expense report, just looking at salaries specifically and educational supplies. It seems like we're a little bit slower to finish off the budget on those. Do you anticipate having a large amount of salaries that will need to turn back to the town?
So, so, I'll do, educational supplies is slightly easier, Kim, so I'll start there. Yeah, educational supplies, I'm not concerned about. I, I've met with the acquisition staff, I think we have a pretty good path forward. I also, I can joke, but we do a lot of our ebook and overdrive purchasing at the end because it's so expensive. So we've started to construct some ebook wish lists. We're also looking at, you know, I always do some like big graphic novel orders at the end of the year, which I want to see if we have money for. And then we do, like, sometimes there's like big multimedia orders too. I will say, Leah's spent a lot of time putting together some adult carts. There's also, we found that manga is very popular for some of the kids coming in. We had thirteen kids at the last Manga Anime Club, which was very exciting as a, as a teen programming number. So we really want to support that as part of the collection, you know, we're doing Free Comic Book Day on May sixth. So, you know, we're trying to get those, those graphic novels of bringing the kids in, we're trying to support that. So there will be a lot more bills, I think, that get paid that you'll see just in the next couple of weeks in the May meeting. And then we'll do overdrive purchasing probably in mid-June, I would say. And that, I'm not concerned about spending down the materials budget, we've always been able to do that in the past. What I will probably ask you guys in May is if we do get kind of last minute bills or we get bills that go over, spill into the next fiscal year. We, we've, I always ask for authorization to use the donations account. So we're getting to that time of year, we're going to ask you guys again. We've never had to go into the donations account, but it is helpful to, or the Mary Faye account, that's what it is for the books. So if we have the option to do that, that will allow the staff to continue spending, I think, for a little bit longer. And that always kind of de-stresses everybody about the close of the fiscal year. Salaries, because we had a number of part-time people resign. That is really where you're seeing a big, a big kind of jump. We also had, you know, Amy Townsley left, I believe, within that fiscal year. So there was a gap for a period of time before we had hired somebody new. There will be at least the equivalent, I think, of a full payroll that gets turned back to the town at this point. So it's, it's like the previous year, there's a pretty substantial salary surplus. But a lot of that can be explained by the things I just said, by staff attrition is the main reason why we have that much left.
That makes sense.
Good, any other questions or thoughts? And we're okay on turning salary back because it's always been sort of extenuating circumstances, I think. It's not that we, it's not that we have enough staff, right?
I mean, we could use, you know, we might be having that discussion. Mia Bolos, who is one of our pages who's in college, she's actually coming back. I think in about two weeks, and she's going to work a pretty substantial amount. If you guys come in, you're going to see her, I think, some of the time, and that's, she's home from college, she's been really excited about coming back. And to be honest, because of the staff attrition, we can really use her, so we're excited about her return. We also know that some of the pages are going to be getting out of school at different points, and we may even offer them some additional hours. Kim and I have talked just in a preliminary way about maybe hiring a new associate. You know, we may be doing that, I think, as early as, as May or June. I think we talked about that in the last meeting too, but with Mia coming back and kind of picking up additional hours. We're fitting her into the schedule and we're going to see how that works, I think, for a couple of weeks. And then if we really still feel that there's a need, I, I would like Kim to sit on, on the interviews with me. And just, her time is a little limited right now. So we would look at, you know, when Kim has the time to do the interviews. If she doesn't in, in May or June and we really need somebody, we might have Mariana or even Leah sit in on the interviews with me. And then, you know, I don't know who's going to be at the desk, that'll be the, the trick, but we'll try to figure all that out, yeah.
Good, so staffing always can use more, but doing fine as it is, sort of.
Yeah, we do, we have, we have a leaner staff than past years at this time of year. And I, I am, we are asking anybody if they want to do extra shifts. And right now, I'm going to say if you're a part-time library staff member and you want to work, we're making that happen. So I'm, I'm trying my best, Kim and every, everybody who's here, everybody who's watching. We're trying to spend down as much of the salaries budget as we can while also filling the needs of the library, right? There are opportunities for extra shifts and we do have employees who are taking advantage of that.
That's great, that's good. Other, okay, other questions on the, on any, on anything we've covered today?
Just a quick observation, when Amy and I were at the Coyote presentation last night, I couldn't help. But notice that, I think her name is Jenny, who was restacking books, she was a demon. She was, she was working very hard and I, I got a chance to talk to her for a brief moment afterwards. And seems like she's working out well, and so hats off to whoever it was that brought her to us. She seems like a good addition.
Yeah, she was a library patron before she became one of the associates. And I, I will take this opportunity, both to thank you and Amy for coming to the program. But also, David stayed for a little while to help me do chairs. And then I had three different staff members helping me with the furniture at the end of the, it was almost like everybody who was working. So just, I really appreciated that, because I think you know in the past, some of you know in the past, I've hurt myself trying to put the library back together. So we're trying to avoid that in the future and just, it really did feel like a team effort. And we were able to get out of the building on time, which is always, you know, a healthy thing, so.
And one other thing I was going to quickly bring up that we can put on another agenda. Is I attended the Narcan. A presentation, which everybody should do, it's quick, it's fast, it's great. But my, I, they are, the nurses were talking about wanting to put Narcan in the AED or on the AED. Places all over town, because, you know, we were talking about how Ryan's trying to have the staff train, which is fabulous. But if they have their little pouches that you're given with the Narcan at home, or for their families or whatever. They don't have it at the library, so I guess they said they are going to go to town meeting next. Town meetings to get the money, I don't know if any of you are aware, but when they sued the companies for all these addictions with opiates. Money was given to each state, our state decided it can only be dispersed through town meetings. But it can only be spent on these programs, so it's insane. And I worry that the town may not understand that it's money that will sit there and do nothing if we don't spend it. But I do, the nurses had mentioned, there were just stickers that could go on the AED that says Narcan in here. And I wonder if as a board, it might be worth looking into and just finding the money, so it's in the building, but.
How often do the, the Narcan inhalers need to be replaced in order to be not expired?
As long as they're kept in, I'm not a doctor, kept in, you know, you can't keep them in your car and things like that. But she was saying they were good, I think the ones they were passing out were good for like five years or more. And if they are used, just go, if you have to use the ones, because you, and that's what they said, you're going to use probably two minimally, three, four, if you. Depending on the.
Her episode, right, yeah.
Great, you just bring them back to your health department and they have, you can refresh them.
Can I say I totally support this, Amy, and thank you for bringing it up?
Whatever needs to be done, and they will, the, the state is providing the Narcan doses for free. So it's, I think it's a sticker and Ryan's willingness to have it in the building, but.
One upstairs, one downstairs?
Where the AEDs are would be smart.
So there's, we have one AED unit that's upstairs. And that we, we have already had discussions about adding in the Narcan as part of that. When we, when the town first got Narcan, this was kind of pre all the, 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 the stuff, the litigation. That, that Amy alluded to was, we, we did have a conversation with. I don't know if it was Chief Achilles, it might have even been his predecessor. We talked about, you know, the, the public safety's proximity to the library and how they could respond with Narcan pretty quickly. You know, I think now that the technology is kind of years later, a lot easier. Those pouches are very compact, right? We're making sure that library staff are trained on Narcan as well. So I attended one of them, I think I'm going to go to the next one, on May thirtieth in the afternoon, it's a Tuesday. If you guys want to join me, there's registrations open. But, you know, I, we're, we're also going to do a town training. And then the staff, if you remember, we had the fire department come, people from our emergency services. And they came and did an update on the AED, like a refresher, because we have so many staff now that weren't here when we installed the AED unit. We've also had preliminary conversations where if we do do an AED unit downstairs, where would it go? One of the chief concerns, just to let you guys know, because many of you were not on the board back then, was that a kid would open. The door and the alarm would go off. I can tell you just from maintaining the doorbell system that we installed during COVID. Kids love to just press buttons and open doors all the time. Kids love to just press buttons and open doors all the time and we have to kind of plan for that, right? So it's just, it's finding a place that the AED unit could go and that would be, um, kind of visible. But also not, um, enticing for a child to access, if that makes sense. That was the challenge before and continues to kind of.
Does it have to go in where the child would be, can you put it inside of, say, an office downstairs?
About Kim's office with the sign.
Yeah.
Also, just for anybody who's listening, the, um, it, when you register to take the Narcan, it says eighteen and over. But the nurses don't want it that. As a matter of fact, my sixteen-year-old attended and they were thrilled, they, because these are the people who kind of, you know, are in where things can happen. So you can just, you can register and bring your children with you.
That's great, Amy, thank you. Good, other thoughts? All right, it is twelve forty-eight, David, I think you're out of here on time.
Thank you, thank you.
I have a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Yes, and let's set our next date before we all leave, how's that? Um, we slid, we slid down a week due to the agenda not being filed on time.
We're scheduled on the fourteenth, no, wait, I'm a month away. I'm in April, isn't that?
Yeah, no, so I think it would be May twelfth would be the second, is that too soon? Should we do May twelfth or May nineteenth?
I think twelfth, we, then we can, that'll give time with Ryan's review post-meeting, right? I mean.
All right.
Otherwise, we're going to keep sliding and we'll, we'll just keep.
Well, yes, we'll be, sorry about that, anyway. So, okay, so good, so my job today is to email you all. The blank and the last year's performance of Al, and if you can get that to me before the eleventh, like way before, I mean, before the twelfth. Way before the twelfth.
Why don't you give a date a deadline, Marguerite? I'm serious.
Yes, uh.
For the twelfth, maybe at eleven fifty-nine on the ten, on the eleventh, but.
Right, on the eleventh, yes, get it into midnight the, the day before. I will say it takes me a week to sort it out. What if we do, uh, get it to me by Wednesday, May third, how's that?
Good.
All right.
Anybody else not feel it's okay?
That's an optimistic, but I hope a hard date, okay? Okay, so I'm going to say May third, I'm going to, um, send those out right now and then I'll do a reminder. Um, and again, I will use every sentence of, of, uh, of comment that everybody puts in. I will include all of those, so I'm not going to edit or anything, I'm just going to put it all in, all right? Good, okay. Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Okay, uh, let's see, Amy?
Aye.
Kim?
Aye.
David?
Aye.
Marguerite? Aye. All right, I will see you on the twelfth of May, thank you, everybody.
Enjoy the pretty day.
Thank you, guys.
Okay, bye.
Thank you.